What's that?
It's a platform for all the meeting owners to be driving. All right, we have a public address tonight on Restore New York. Anyone who read those?
Public hearing, Restore New York, round seven application. The Village of Manans will be applying for grant funding from Restore New York Round Seven Program administered by the Empire State Development Corporation. Comments can be presented at the hearing or in writing to Clerk Andrew Henn. The public hearing is open to the public and is handicap accessible.
Sure, I'll just provide a little introduction to the grant. So the village in partnership with the owners of Ninety Broadway. The owners are the White Kizali Group Corporation rather, are applying for funding through the New York State Restore New York Grant Process Round Seven to obtain funds to rehabilitate the inside of Ninety Broadway. So that's the a series of vacant storefronts to the right of the Dollar Tree. It's Dollar Tree Store. So internal improvements for electric HVAC. The entire roof will be replaced, so that'll actually include the entire building over Dollar Tree. Along with some parking lot improvements, so they're going to mill and fill the parking lot and add parking islands and vegetation. So right now, there's not a tree in the entire parking lot. So part of this process will be to vegetate the whole site in line with post zoning law. So we can add some more shade trees in there as well as pedestrian connections from the adjoining property and also provide pedestrian connections for people that park within the parking lot and go into the various different buildings. So we're working with the owners and the application is due a week from Friday. And it's a complicated process, a lot of cost estimating and third party cost estimates. And we feel pretty confident about the submission. And it's a good project, so I'll stop there. I'll open up a comment if you're visiting.
I got a question. You mentioned about there's going to be some trees being planted. Of what kind? Broadway or evergreen trees or both kinds?
Probably not evergreen. I'm going to leave that up to our landscape architects. And also when the project comes before the Village Board. The zoning law that's being actually introduced tonight includes a schedule of all the villages' preferred types of vegetation and prohibited certain types of fruit bearing trees and obviously invasive species. So the big thing are shade trees to shade the parking lot.
How long's the project going to take to get done?
That I don't know, but we allocated about eight to 12 months.
And I'll be glad when the parking lot gets repaved because it needs to be done pretty badly.
Absolutely.
So just so everybody knows, for economic, gender, welfare, equality of life reasons, social reasons, I do support this project at Mid-City Plaza, Ninety Broadway. And if you people board decides to approve of this Restore New York grant, please.
We already did approve it. We just have to go through the resolution and that type of thing tonight.
While you still have it, I'm still urging, let's get this done. Thank you.
Anybody else on Restore New York public hearing?
Lovely on the screen.
All right, hearing no further comments. It's 04, we'll phone to the public hearing. Right now, we're going to rearrange the schedule a bit. We've got to do the resolution, so we're going to jump to number eight. For Restore New York Communities. We just need the resolution, right?
Just whatever doubt gives us, sir.
I'd say it should reach, it's a long resolution.
It's a long one. Can I just get the highlights?
How long?
It's only
It's a page.
Page.
There we go. E V announcer voice. Whereas the Empire State Development Corporation is requesting funding proposals for seventh round of the Restore New York Municipal Grant Program. And whereas grant funds are available for projects to demolish, deconstruct, and/or rehabilitate, reconstruct vacant abandoned surplus or endorphins, residential, commercial, and/or mixed use buildings. And whereas, an important goal of the Restore New York of Restore New York is to revitalize urban centers for rural areas and disadvantaged communities. Is anticipated that upon completion, the project funded by Restore New York Grants to attract individuals, families, and industry and commercial enterprises in the municipality. It is further anticipated that the improved community and business climate will result in an increased tax base, thereby improving municipal finances and where with all to grow, to further grow municipalities' tax and resource base, lessening its dependence on state aid. Whereas cities with populations less than 40,000 can apply for up to $2 million in grant funding, now therefore be resolved by the Village Board of Manans that hereby certifies submission of a Restore New York grant application not to exceed $2 million for Mid-City Shopping Plaza in downtown Manans. Be it further resolved that the mayor and the Village of Manans, the mayor of the Village of Manans, Albany County, New York, is hereby authorized as an official representative of the Village of Manans to execute and submit the Restore New York application. All understandings and assurances contained herein and is also hereby authorized to execute any grant agreements or documentation to implement the grant. Be it further resolved that the project meets the following objectives. One, the project is consistent with the Manans 2020 Comprehensive Plan and the Manans zoning update in progress. The proposed financing for this project is appropriate and committed. The project facilitates effective and efficient use of existing and future public resources so as to promote both economic development and preservation of community resources for the project develops, develops and enhances infrastructure and other facilities in a manner that will attract, create, and sustain employment opportunities where applicable, so moved.
Second?
Hi.
Hi.
Let's stand up. Great, thank you, Mayor. Please. We've all been here before, so this is the final presentation of the proposed draft zoning law. Tonight, my goal is to have the Village Board accept this on the long and begin the process of public review, including referral to the Albany County Planning Board and scheduling a public hearing from February. So this is officially labeled as local law number one of 2023. Let's pull this up. Will we be able to go to a full screen now?
It is on full screen. I think you have to do it.
So we can't get rid of everybody on the side?
No, unfortunately, I thought I could.
Okay, all right. So tonight, real quickly, because some of these items, we've already addressed a few months ago in the initial presentation. So we're just going to get into the project introduction and the overall goals of the process, the planning process that the village used to fit where we are today, and an actual overview of the draft law, next steps, and then I'll pause for discussion amongst the Village Board members. So the Village of Manans received a grant from C D T C, Capitol District Transportation Committee, through the Community and Transportation Linking Program to update the village's land use regulations in response to the 2020 Comprehensive Plan. So every community that adopts Comprehensive Plan, by state law, you should update your land use regulations to be in compliance with the plan. So that was the process that was undertaken. The major goals for this was obviously to update the plan, or update the zoning law rather, in conformance with the plan. Facilitate revitalization of vacant and underutilized parcels, particularly along the Broadway corridor. Promote and improve walkability and transit use. So the village has the Bus Rapid Transit stations to key locations. So the revisions and the zoning amendments really focused on enhancing those locations of the bus stations and building upon those for increased density in the residential and commercial events. Fostering compact design, increasing the efficiency of the vacant and underutilized lots, integrating complete street standards and design guidelines, which we'll spend a few slides on. We also consolidated a bunch of separate chapters in the village code into the zoning law to make it more efficient, more streamlined, and get, engage the process of an applicant and the village from having to go to these various separate village chapters to comply with the process. So the planning process that the Village and C D T C used, first, they created a study advisory committee and a technical advisory committee. So the study advisory committee had village representation, town and colony, Capitol District Transportation Committee, obviously C D T C, as I said, Capitol District Regional Planning Commission, Transportation Authority, Albany County, and D O T, New York State D O T. So that group met every three or four months, depending upon where the project was in the process. And then there was a technical advisory committee that kind of met more often and really dug into the details. So that was the mayor, along with Trustee Marsh, Lyle, D Martecco, the co enforcement officer, I'm sorry, Lyle, I butchered your name. Rema, who was with us tonight, from C D T C, Jonas from C D T C, and myself. I joined this process in April of this year. And previously, a planner that had left, Labella, was working closely with the village. So I took over in April. So the project started in the spring of 2021 with a heavy push on public outreach. It was important for the village to go and firm all of the information and direction that was provided in the Comprehensive Plan, just to make sure that we had it correctly. So that includes stakeholder interviews, focus groups, attending the village picnic, surveys, including a visual preference survey, which provided a variety of images for the public to determine if they liked a particular building design or disliked. And that helped us in guiding the preparation of the specific standards and guidelines that are in the draft. So that was a major part of the process to make sure, again, that we were headed down the right path. So in addition, there was ongoing meetings, again, strategic action that the SAC Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee met very often. Between March and October of this year, we worked on multiple drafts. And as Brian said, you're intimately familiar with us now, more so probably than anybody even wanted to be. But that's, that's, that's an important part of the zoning update because you really have to dig into the details. Because you make one change in the code and there's a cascading effect. And we got to make sure we capture all of them. So in November, we provided a Village Board update on our progress and highlighted the major changes that we were considering. Then the first draft of the zoning law was provided to the Village Board November 11th. And we allowed for public comments for the 16th. Then we had a special Village Board Z B A workshop on the 28th to go through in more detail those changes and make sure everybody was aware of them and to address any, any issues that might be in there. And then today, we're introducing the revised draft of zoning law as local law one of 2023. So the village last updated their law in 2013, 2014. Obviously, there's a variety of revisions prior to that, which is not uncommon for communities. We look to consolidate these chapters here. So Chapter 30, Planned Development Districts, we brought that into the zoning ordinance. Same with gasoline stations, which dealt only with required separation distances between gasoline stations to make sure that there didn't become a focus of them, unnecessary number of them in one location. That that's important to ensure efficient use of the property in the village. Then there was two separate chapters for site plan review. And we, again, just brought them into the full zoning code. So we prepared descriptions for all the zoning districts. The current zoning law doesn't have description. And the purpose, purpose statements are important because it explains why that district was created and what the long term land use projects that the village would like to see in those districts. And sometimes the style and the design as well. So those were updated and provided in the current draft. We integrated the allowable use table and the bulk standards into the code. So you have one, one location to go to. You're not having to refer to multiple schedules, which sometimes could be revised and then accurately integrated into the full code. We went down through all of the different zoning districts. And this took probably the longest time and just confirmed all the uses that the village would like to see in each of these districts in the technical review that was required, whether it's allowed as a break with just a building permit or a site plan approval, or the highest level is special use permit. So we also went through, obviously revised all the definitions. We removed terms that were outdated or unnecessary. We added new terms as we added new uses. So every use has to be defined. So the zoning board, the village board, Lyle, can make sure that what's being proposed is consistent with the use and then allows for opportunities for interpretations if a particular use is not actually included in the code. So we updated the Z B A, the Zoning Board of Appeals Procedures Regarding Area and Use Variants, just to bring them up to date of New York State Village Law. And we rolled into the P D D, the Planned Development District Regulations, and made some modifications and just clarified the village's authority. So a P D D is a rezone of property that is done through a review process separate than, say, updating a full zoning code. So somebody can come in and say, I would like to get a P D D approval, rezone my property for use and density that perhaps may not directly correlate with the code. Ultimately, the village board has to approve that. So we just made that very clear upfront in the process so that the village board, if you decide that that particular proposal is not consistent with the village code or the comp plan, you can deny that immediately and avoid everybody spending time and money going through the process. So the zoning map, we made a few changes. So T4, which again, we'll talk about these, these particular 245 and Broadway districts. So we rezoned the corner of Amsterdam Ave and Pearl Street Street, which are the W N Y T Station Office Complex and a parking area behind that. So that area was originally Broadway Business District. And we felt that if that parking lot, it does become available, it'd be a good infill site for the T4 Residential District. Then for T5, which is really the high, the higher intensity, high residential density, commercial uses, we expanded that to include Manans Manor and the village offices, the former bank, and then this location here. And that's directly in line with what the Comprehensive Plan had recommended in creating a village center area in which development could then build out in all directions. And then we made some changes to the light industrial and Broadway Business District locations. So north of 378, there's an existing light industrial. To the north here. I can get this, you might curse there. But on the top, that is currently light industrial. And we felt we'd resume that to Broadway Business District, more in line with what is there right now. Similarly, the Broadway Business District along Elmwood Road is being proposed to be rezoned to light industrial. And again, that's in line with the uses that are there right now. And then the Regional Market location, which is currently Broadway Business District, proposing to change that to light industrial. And then a small parcel right along the northern edge of East Elmwood Road on the southern part of the Regional Market, proposing to resume that to high, or heavy industrial. And the reason for this is we actually went out, we spoke with the owners of the Regional Market. They gave us a good tour and showed us all of the variety of uses that they have out there, which is a pretty unique piece of property. And they have a partnership with Midland Farms because they're out of room and they need additional room for their trucks to queue. You get filled with the milk and other materials that they create there. And then they needed some staging areas too for the trucks that are waiting to get picked up. So long term, obviously, the village would still like to see that area be kind of a focal point for farmers market, wholesale produce type uses. But at the same time, we recognize that we need to provide them with a little bit of flexibility to ensure that they could, you know, pay the bills, keep the lights on, and utilize the different parts, sections of their property in a manner that's consistent with their long term vision. But provide some protections for the village to make sure it doesn't become just an area where trucks are parked and dilapidated vehicles are stored because that's not an efficient use of that property. And then the heavy industrial section that we proposed to rezone is an area where they're already charging other companies to store vehicles. And we wanted to bring that, bring that consistent with the current, bring that use up to date and consistent with the zoning law if it's passed. But it also provides the village with authority to make sure, again, they're not parking unregistered, inoperable junk vehicles because that's not permitted anywhere in the village. So we took a lot of time to make these changes and feel that well thought out. And again, we've been in contact with those owners. So the Broadway Business District, which again, with a big chunk of Broadway, south of 378, and then a big chunk north of 378, that's the village's mixed use commercial, light industrial area. That's the focus. We'd like to see two story structures to have efficient use of the property, maintain a four story maximum, so we're not getting too, too high. And the fourth floor is required to be stepped back. So that helps kind of protect that corridor so it doesn't become too imposing if you get more than one or two of these taller buildings put in. Minimal front yard parking. We acknowledge the fact that due to existing development patterns and topography, that parking in the front is going to be necessary in certain, certain locations. And you see them up and down the corridor. Obviously, we're not going to prohibit them from using that. So we're giving them some flexibility there. And then we created and clarified the residential density, so 30 units an acre, which is consistent with some recent developments that have been approved in the village and is in line with the overall character that's being desired and recommended in the Comprehensive Plan. And when you're within a half a mile of the, either of the Bus Rapid Transit stations, you get a density bonus and you can get up to 40 units per acre. And the purpose of that, obviously, is that if you're located close to a transit facility, the need for additional parking is reduced and that you can increase that density. And just like with every project, it has to go before the various boards of the village. And just because we say you're going to allow 40 units an acre, everything's to last and work, the infrastructure, everything has to fit on the site. So that's really just the baseline, a starting point for the village and the applicants. So the current zoning law doesn't include specific guidance or numbers for density. We felt it was important to get that out there so everybody has an understanding of what to expect. So the T4, that's a neighborhood district. That's really kind of works well with the North Albany area there. And then your two family and single family residential district along Woolford and Amsterdam Avenue. But this allows for small scale, commercial, mixed use, and residential uses in that area. And it's 20 units an acre, which is consistent with surround density that we evaluated. And then the Village Center District, that surrounds the location that we're in here. Again, a strong mix of commercial and residential uses, outdoor pedestrian areas, a two story minimum, the second floor in this, this district is intended to be usable as opposed to in the Broadway Business District. The village has an opportunity to provide some flexibility for a developer to build what looks like two stories, but it's actually a single story. The purpose of that is, again, to try to create a nice, consistent development while up and down the corridor with opportunities for outdoor recreation, pedestrian classes, et cetera. So just like the Broadway Business District, the base density is 30 and the transit oriented development bonus is 40 units an acre. And then within the Broadway corridor, the Broadway corridor, Broadway Business District, T4 and T5, those three districts, you have to comply with specific design standards and guidelines. So standards are, you shall do this, guidelines are, you should. But we also, in the current draft, provided some language that gives the village board some flexibility if an applicant cannot meet all of these different standards and recognizing that the corridors has a lot of built environment and that when you come in with a design code like this, you kind of have to recognize that perhaps everything that we're talking about is not going to fit in there nicely. So we want to make sure the village board has that flexibility with the applicants. We also looked at all the streets in the village and categorized them into these various street categories, community commercial, which is Broadway, neighborhood mixed use, neighborhood across Town Connector, like say, Board's Lane. So that connects the different parts of the village together, neighborhood streets and industrial. So the purpose of these are when the development is proposed, that will include curb cuts or improvements along the right of way or even just outside of the right of way. Or if a new road is being constructed, or an existing road is being significantly moved upon. These standards will help guide the applicant in the village W, and in coordination with D O T, if we're talking about Broadway, and how to make sure that those improvements are consistent with the code. So landscape design, street trees, lighting, benches, trash receptacles, bicycle facilities, whether that's increasing bike lanes or making sure that, that there's appropriate bike racks and other facilities either, either within or near the right of way. So we also went through your existing off street parking and we added bicycle parking. So for each project, there will be required bicycle parking to be provided. And again, we're not talking anything significant. So it's a bike rack here, a couple of bike racks there. But those are listed in here. And that really correlates with the type of use, whether it's multifamily, commercial, or mixed use. Spent a lot of time on this and to make sure that it's consistent and accurate. And again, this just provides another opportunity for somebody to get out of the car and drive and utilize a bike and make sure they have a nice, safe, secure place to put those. And for the, all right, move forward. And for the off street parking, we talked about this before. We went through and we significantly reduced what was required for off street parking in line with a lot of other communities that have been doing that. Also provides an opportunity where an applicant says, you know what? I really need to have 10 more spots and I'm at my maximum. They can provide justification for that and the village board can make a determination if that is applicable. So obviously, we're looking to decrease the amount of previous area, decrease the costs associated with, with development. The code had parking requirements that were likely carried over from other codes. And, you know, 2023, some cars are smaller. Again, now you have your, your Bus Rapid Transit. You also have the bike lanes at Broadway. So putting all that together and just the need to get rid of the significant amount of parking that you currently have within the village, we tweaked those. But again, there's a safety valve there if, if more parking is required for safety purposes and for the viability of the business. Most recently, we included allowing in law apartments within all residential districts. And there are specific requirements within the code now. So it's limits to 800 square feet, have to be on the same utilities that the principal building is on. One bedroom has to be either within the structure or attached to the principal structure. Can't be standalone structure, can't be above the garage. And the idea here is trying to keep this from becoming a situation where it's, it's developed for the purposes of renting. The idea here, it provides an opportunity for family when it's needed and then still provides the opportunity for when the owner no longer needs it for a family member, that they could rent it out. But because it's within their structure attached, generally, that owner is going to keep a better eye on, on the apartment and that it doesn't become a property management issue or concern with, with the neighbors. It requires a special use and the reason for that is, is because we want to make sure that everything works, fits on the site, it's not, it's not too small, there's enough parking, et cetera. So down the road, if that turns out to be unnecessary, perhaps the village can knock it down to site plan to, to limit the amount of review and the cost associated with that. But because this is a new use, we felt that it was important to start with a specialty permit. Cannabis retail dispensaries would be allowed in Broadway Business District and T5. Again, there's specific requirements in there. And on top of those requirements, the state is still working on their regulations for the, for the dispensaries. So I would not be surprised that we adopt this law, say, in March, the state finalizes their dispensary regulations and says we have to make some changes. So we will go in, follow the law and make sure that we're consistent. But as much as we could, we just deferred to the state regulations. We just focused on location, time, manner, making sure we review the site plan. Signage requirements will apply, but the state will pass very strict signage or regulations. And that's especially used permit. If, if the village does approve one, it will be contingent upon actually getting a copy of the license from the license folder. And that obviously project cannot go forward without the state license. And the state, like a liquor store, you know, very closely controlled. So a lot of the issues are going to be addressed by the state. We just set up our locations and some of the basic requirements. Added communication towers, electric vehicle charging stations. Most recently, just clarified that charging stations in residential districts, you know, cannot be available for commercial use. So not that anybody's going to set up a PEPAL one and charge somebody to use it, but we just wanted to make sure that going forward, one, we provide a clear streamlined process to get these charging stations in where they're feasible, but make sure we're protecting the community character and that they're not open for, for public use on residential property. Similarly, we added the solar energy systems. So there's different tiers, building integrated, roof integrated, ground mounted, and then a larger scale. The larger scales would only be allowed in the heavy industrial districts. And then outdoor lighting standards, pretty straightforward, pretty common in a lot of communities now, full cutoff fixtures, basically it's trying to reduce the amount of light pollution throughout the village for new projects that are going through review. So the, the draft hard copy that will be available on the village website and hard copy is available tomorrow at, at the village offices and at the public library, just like the last time. And when I'm finished, I will want to have the village board formally accept the document and then schedule a public hearing and then authorize me to refer this to the Albany County Planning Board. So today, the, the draft is released and today marks the completion of the linkage study. So again, the linkage study provided funding for the village to update this law. In order for us to comply with the grant requirements, we have to have an end date. So today's the end date that in, in this particular presentation is one of the final tasks so that we can make sure when, when the grant is closed out, that all the different tasks have been accurately completed. Today ends the linkage study project, but this process continues because it, it has to go through the referral of the county planning board. So I'll handle that. We'll have a hearing on the sixth that we will allow for comments during the hearing, but we're going to accept public comments right through February 16th to, to my email and online through the comment portal that we will be setting up. And then we're looking to hopefully adopt this in March, April of this year. If the county comes back or the public or anybody else, the village board insists we need to make some material changes, it's immaterial, say formatting or typo or something that doesn't change the degree of regulation, that can be done without another hearing. But if we say add a use to a district or pull a use out or change density, redefine something, then we'll have to go through the public hearing process, referral to the county. That's not uncommon, particularly with a complete repeal, replacement of the code because there's a lot of living parks in there. But I'm hoping, because we spent a lot of time over this last month and a half to, to meet with property owners and, and EGH, the village board and CBA, that hopefully we've hit that, that everything perfectly and we don't need to make any changes. But we'll wait and see. So I'll pause there. Do you have just any discussion? But those were questions.
Do you have any other comments with you?
I gave all, and I was, I'm coming in the village photographs, I'll drop.
The CBA and the park head parks.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll run additional hard copies for the CBA clerk.
You, I have one.
Yeah, so you have one. And then if we need to run some more, so takes a few minutes. So, so this gets referred to the Albany County Planning Board before the public hearing? It, yeah, it, it generally correlates with the public hearing. So they run on their own schedule, off the top of my head. I don't know when the deadline is, but I recall looking at it last week and we're in line with, we get it out this week, it'll get on their agenda. And that there, they actually meet on the 16th, which is the end of the public county period.
Okay.
But by law, we have to give them at least 30 days. And I would, I have no doubt that Albany County will do it, get back to us.
What happens if someone says something at the public hearing that is a valid point and the board wants to incorporate that into the, into zoning changes?
Right. So if that happens, then we just create a, a list, a running list of, of issues that we'd like to at least consider to change. But we're not going to update it. The county, the county has the draft that they have. So we'll get their comments back. So generally, the way the county referral process works is they'll have a list of recommendations, perhaps, that you can take or leave it. And then they'll have a list of specific requirements that they say, we want you to change this to that. And then it's, and it's a process in which I sit down with you, say, here's all the changes that the Albany County Planning Board require you may. You can decide against it by a super majority vote. So, and again, that's, that's the process. So if you feel like, yeah, that makes sense, we'll make the change. So we'll make all those changes at once and then we'll start the process again. But it would be much more streamlined. So when we send it back to the, to the county, we'll say, here, here's everything that's changed so they don't have to go through the whole document. And then same with when we submit it to you, there'll be a little summary sheet on there that explains the change between current draft and the next draft.
So the changes, oh, sorry, changes if we, if we send, again, if someone brings it up at the, at the public hearing and we decide to incorporate a change or changes in that as well as what the county sends back, those will then be sent back to the county at some point?
Right. So we'll pull them all together, put them in another draft, a clean draft, just like you have here, and it'll be draft two of Local Law one of 2023. So it's very structured process, you know, exactly what, what's changed. So yeah, that'll, that'll, I'll go back. And for another public hearing. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So if we reject their either recommended or required changes, you know, I, I assume we have to provide them a reason.
Yes.
Why that, you know.
So by law, within a certain use, so after you make your decision on accepting or denying their request, you need to provide the county with a simple letter that says this, we agreed to this, we didn't agree to that, and proof of, of those votes and overriding those.
Do they have, and do they have any state overriding that or?
No, if you deny one of their recommended changes or required changes by a majority, that's done. I mean, they could in the next draft say, hey, we still want you to think about that change and you, and if that comes back in an official letter from that, then we go through the process and make a decision on whether or not to accept it or not.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah. Is there CBA members? Mike, Mike, did you have any that you want to mention, any questions?
Do we fix the South?
Pardon me?
Did we fix the, that R1, R2 district?
So what we did is, I'm not sure if you were here at the last meeting. So we, we identified all the parcels in that district that have at least 12,000 square feet. So it's 6,000 square feet per unit district. And in order to get a two-family dwelling, you could need the math to work out.
Yep.
You can divide it. So what we did is we found that there was about, I think, nine or 10 existing two-family dwellings, may have the numbers incorrect. So we identified all the existing two-family dwellings in that district. And we identified all the lots that are at least 12,000 square feet or more. So by simple math, get, or at least be able to apply for a two-family dwelling. Again, there was.
Less than a dozen.
Yeah, less than a dozen.
But the whole thing isn't now two-family.
Well, yeah, I'm just finished. I'm just explaining the rationale as how we got to the final decision. And then we identified all the lots that if you were to round up to the math, round up to two units, and there was a significant number of those. So what we did is I proposed a process in which we'll continue to allow two-family dwellings in there, but you have to have at least 12,000 square feet or more. And that, there's a clarification in the code now on how to calculate density. So you no longer would be allowed to round up to two units. So if you even do the math and you get 1.9 units, you cannot have two-family dwelling. So, and it's a special use permit. So it does still require to go through a more intensive review process. And we felt that that was important to maintain that two-family district. And that's by providing that clarification on calculating the density alleviating concerns that you can have, you know, significant number of two-family dwellings. So the, and the ones with the, with the 12,000 square feet have large enough lots that presumably could accommodate that. But obviously, it still has to go through review, make sure that all the utilities are appropriate, there's enough parking, enough locations for your trash receptacles, et cetera. And that also, it helps kind of incentivize, highlights the fact that two families are allowed here and we want to alleviate the, the legal conversions that, like the areas in the past. So, so we kind of made a middle approach to allow, you know, allow those two-family dwellings, but significantly limited the number that it could be even applied for going forward.
So question becomes then, if someone applies for it and we find that it's, you know, they, their building permit or whatever gets denied because it's, the math works out to be 1.9.
Well, it wouldn't even go to the building permit. So she submitted an application to Lyle, give her the math, says 1.9. We'll deny that.
So it gets denied, it comes before the zoning board appeals then? Would that be a theoretically, would it be a use variance or an area variance?
It wouldn't be a use variance because that is still out there, so it's an area variance.
Sure.
So we always have to provide that safety valve, that runs through that, that, that process.
With each of the zoning districts, and this isn't new that we did, but there's categories. So permitted uses, which are allowed by writing.
Correct.
Site plan uses, which has to go through site plan approval, and then special use permits. That's it, it's a more stringent approach to go through, but it's to give the boards more oversight on stuff. Again, it's not new, but we've outlined the different things that are allowed in those different categories pretty specifically.
Okay.
Anything else?
Hi, everyone. My name is Trish, and I'm a transportation coordinator of the Capitalistic Transportation Committee. Sir Rogers mentioned before, and I just wanted to thank the village board for, you know, working with us on this project. It's been a real pleasure working with Mayor Beck and Brian and Lyle and Matt and everyone else who's been involved in the project. And I know that everyone over at TDTC is really happy with the way that, that the project has worked out, you know, at least up to this point. And I know that it's, you know, it's.
It's a bumpy road.
Well, but it's, you know, it's, it's, you guys are so close to the finish line and it's going to get there and it's going to be just so wonderful. So we're really happy with how it's turned out and how well it's been integrated, like all the, the transportation components have been integrated into, into the zoning code. So I just want to say thank you for being such great partners. And also I brought the Capitalistic Complete Streets Design Guide, which was just in our office. I brought a copy of the village, I'm proud of you.
Likewise, we're very grateful for the funding to do this project, for the input from you guys to walk us through it. That city came in April, well, it was actually our third that we lent for us. So it's been a little bit of a issue, but I can't thank you enough because you've been great people, very knowledgeable and very easy to work with. So I appreciate your interest.
It's been. There you go.
So you need us to accept the document and then set it up for a public hearing?
Right, and schedule a public hearing. I will handle, yeah.
And do we do that at our next meeting or we have to, but when do we want to do the public hearing?
The public hearing, I think we were talking about having this scheduled February 6th. Let's see.
The next meeting, yeah.
So you want to.
Do we need to read this resolution?
Oh, that's just, just for kind of placeholder purposes.
Okay.
So we, you know, there's clear label of the local law because it repeals and replaces chapter 169 and then repeals all of the other chapters. So I wanted to have a placeholder in there. And I'll work with Don the specifics of the local law.
So I mean, you just motion, motion to.
Motion to accept.
Accept and schedule a public hearing for February 6th.
Second.
All favor.
All right.
This is, this is great.
Thank you all. I'll let my co-workers know.
I'm curious alone or?
Yes, it was, it, it, it was quite an endeavor to create that.
Yeah. All right, can you type it out? Sorry, I stopped reading for a minute.
Thanks for coming tonight, everyone.
Absolutely.
Thank you both.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I'm all set.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
All right, we'll return to the agenda. We have open forum. Ready, Bill?
A couple things. Now, there's two, two I'm going to skip if you don't, written in my piece of paper. Now, I'd like to propose volcano trash builds and other items at least four feet away from each and every single fire item on all the pieces of our village. By several times observed equipment, items and other things being located way to close to fire item. Another one, I wish to propose priming and painting all wooden guide rails, either leaking green or regular green in all of our parks and playgrounds and other village property, including 255 Broadway property in our proposed 2022 and 2023 village block, if this may be done. Now, number five. Now, some, now, on December 5th, 2022, the day we had our village board meeting, I observed that the lights had left on during nighttime on the second floor of 250 Broadway building in the courtroom. And I understand that the courtroom clerks must sometimes work late hours. But on that day, I saw the lights being left on one night. But on that day, I saw the lights being left on one night when no one was in the working during that night of 20, of December 5th, 2022. I'm like, if they're not going to use the lights, let's please cut them off. It could save energy. Now another thing, now while refueling my white vehicle at the Laro fuel station on Borough Way here in Annapolis, I observed two blue barrels blocking through fire extinguishers that's a fuel state of area at this fuel station. So I had, so I had removed both of those barrels from both fire extinguishers at least three feet away. And I'd like to propose one village vote requiring all items be at least four feet or more away from each, every single fire hydrant in all buildings and other related infrastructure within our village.
Fire hydrants or fire extinguishers?
Fire extinguishers at the gas station.
How did you have them removed?
I moved them away.
All right, you've been told not to do that. You're not a representative of the village.
I'm not doing it as a representative of the village. Don't worry about it. Now, since many of our street signs are cracking or buzzing busted, I'd like to recommend that our village streets and signs must should be replaced with new street signs plus new aluminum signposts, not steel ones, because steel ones rust eventually. Now, eighth and last, remember I had raised the issue about having our streets, you know, bridges and sidewalks and parking lots, you know, we repaved with, with using waste gravel, cement, waste oil products, waste products such as asphalt, synthetic rubber and engine oil, repaving our village streets in the foreseeable future? Well, here's the list of the streets that I wrote down, particularly the north, south part of Oakwood Avenue, which has badly needs repaired because like all the village streets, it's got bunks, ruts, cracks and puddles. And I'd like to see that street, you know, repaved. It needs to be done badly. So that's one request to be done. Now, thank you for letting me speak. I'm done. You're welcome. Here goes, John.
How are you? I'm Bob Basher. I think the, I guess maybe for the last 11 to 12 years, reacting now as associate judge over here. And I'm here really because of a matter of serious concern. But I think it's potentially existential in nature. We've got a real problem over at this court. And the problem essentially is if Susan, whatever reason, stops working. What, I mean, it stops. I mean, that's. And if it stops for four or six weeks, I'm not sure what happens then with the office of court administration and so forth. I mean, that, that would be the end. So what has to happen? We haven't had a clerk. I don't know how long. We have to have a clerk that's able to perform the job to assist Susan, ideally. A clerk who ultimately would want to make transition and take over Susan's job down route. She's not going to be here for that. And I think she's really closing in on it. The problem we've had with the clerks before, and they've been very good. There was Danielle, there was Kimmy, Jennifer. There is so much work that has to be done. It's become a very difficult job. They're not paid enough money. So the first time they get an opportunity to make more money is if they leave. We have to have a clerk that's paid sufficient money who will want to stay. Because the problem is if they can't ultimately do Susan's job, we're going to have the same problem and it's not going to, you know, go away. The amount of work that, that increased since I've been there is astronomical. And I really, I mean, just, just Colony Town Court issued 4,000 traffic tickets in 2022, Manana's to 3,880. They've got 10 clerks. We've got one. The criminal process has increased.
Do they want to part with one?
I'm telling you, that, that, that could happen. And here's the problem, you know, the, the court shuts down. I, I don't know what happens after four or six weeks. I don't think the office of court administration is going to permit that to happen. And then I don't know what occurs, whether it gets absorbed over in Colony. I don't know how that ultimately spins off to the police department. I don't want to see any of that happening. You know, and Susan, I'm the assistant, so I'm not here as much. When Chris got sick, I sort of filled in a little more than I normally do. I, I can't imagine what he does, to be honest with you. I couldn't do it. And I thought when Susan would say to me things like the phone keeps ringing or there's too many people here, quite frankly, I thought she was exaggerating. I sat there for two or three days. I can tell you the phone didn't stop ringing. It didn't stop. And there were six or eight people waiting in the hallway constantly. That's the situation, you know, and I don't, you know, other than saying what I said, and I can tell you that the other problem, Susan has complained about what, what she's getting paid. You know, and, and, you know, she's, she's a chief clerk. She doesn't have the title. The clerks, these other courts are getting 75,000 to 74,000. I don't know what she makes. I think she mentions she makes maybe that, I don't even know what it is, 60 maybe, 48, you know, he. I don't know how he does it without necessarily, and I don't care about mine, to be honest with you. I might be asking for more money. I'm, whatever I get is fine. I never did this to make any money or done it as a public service, and that's why I'm doing it.
So Benny, any interest in a part-time clerk position that was being advertised?
You know, I, I think.
Was it ever advertised?
Well, yeah, I think, I think you were at some point. I, we were. I guess I'd have to ask Don. Did Don, did a part-time ad go out?
We put an ad in the paper. We also put it on, you wanted it on D because we got nobody from the ad. But indeed, we got like 250 people, but a lot of them were.
This isn't for the full time.
Was this for the part-time?
For the part-time?
When we, Bill and I met with you guys, the first thing you were going to do is advertise for a part-time position.
I didn't actually make, I did not know we got to go ahead and do that.
I thought you thought about the full time. We never did anything in the first.
Agreed to that and move up. We said that step one is get the part-time person in, sort of help Susan and, what's her name?
Julie.
Julie, right.
And then as far as salaries, we said you're in the middle of a budget year, so that would have to be brought up for the next year's budget. It's coming up in your, February 21st, you would put it in your budget requests. We talked a lot about that at the meeting.
Okay, if I missed the part that I had the okay to go ahead with the part-time ad, I apologize. I put it out that right away. I did not understand the budget process. I too explained and argued for an immediate raise for Susan. And if I missed the procedural aspect of having it wait for another year, I think that's going to be a problem. I really do. I, I'm concerned about that, and Sheriff Bob's concerned.
Oh, it's fiscal year, so February 21st is when.
Let me just give you what Susan wrote before.
I mean, June, we're talking like June 27th.
We're talking not till June, right? I mean, I, I, I hope we make it till June. I.
But I mean, for, for races.
I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what you call it, an emergency raise, a variance. I don't know what you call it in the process, in the process of being agent here in the village. But I would suggest that we undertake that process.
But when I, when we met that day, I said, first and foremost, you need to get someone in here. I said, if she's making a hundred dollars or she's making a thousand dollars an hour, that doesn't change the workload that she has on her. And you said, if we're going to do, pay that kind of money, I'm going to bring in a sleeping bag and I'm going to sleep there. So you were part of the conversation.
I don't deny, listen, I, I don't deny any of that. I'll get on the part-time thing right away.
Which, so now we've lost, what, another month and a half by not having done that for more Susan to be handling this? But it's two separate things. Again, if she's making $35 an hour, it doesn't change her workload. So we need somebody in here to help her to take some of that workload off of her.
Well, that's correct. And that's why we have Julie.
Right, but that's, it's not enough. You said you need another part-time person, which is what you, I thought all along you guys already done.
No, no, we had not done it. And if, say, everybody wants it in translation or missed that obvious point, then I apologize. I'll get on that right away.
Julie's terrific. She really is. But she's only there, you know, at a limited time. She helps out on court proceedings, and we couldn't have done it without her. We really need a deputy clerk who wants to stay there, who is not going to be looking, you know, for the next job because they'll make an extra five or six thousand. And Susan's got to train that person. So now she's doing more work in addition to what she normally does. The, the amount of work that the court has expanded, I mean, when I started it was a fraction of what it is today.
But Julie can't be a, Julie can't be the deputy.
She also works for you.
She, she's, she's clerk somewhere else. She sort of comes over here and helps. And she gets paid for it, but she's, she's very helpful.
Of replacing, if we did find a deputy, that would replace Julie.
Absolutely.
Julie, we wouldn't need you.
That is correct.
Okay.
But it hasn't been for lack of trying.
No, I.
People, the people that have come and applied, well, have left. Some needed the insurance. So.
I think it really gets back down to what Bob said. It just, it just be, we, as a village, the village, I believe, needs to be more competitive. And it's salaries, it's going to maintain these people and retain these people. That's what I.
And I think that's true. You know, and ideally, the person we would have as the deputy theoretically would be the person who would then transition. Because Susan's not going to be here forever. You know, and God forbid something happened to her. She got sick and she couldn't work for four or five weeks. And we're done. I mean, there's nothing that can be done. I mean, there really isn't. I mean, it would, it would come to, to a stop. So hopefully, we can do something quicker than later to prevent that from happening. Because I don't want to see that. You know, I've been doing it and I want to, you know, and that's why I'm here. Because I've got, you know, a real concern, that status of.
And I'm here to support Bob. He had some things to say, and I'm here to support him.
And it's got nothing to do with me. I'm not looking for any more money here. I mean, it's not a problem. I don't do it for that.
Take it under consideration and you're going to work on getting the part-time person?
Get an ad for the county. We'll get an ad in the medium.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The mission for department heads is when?
Twenty, what did you just say, first?
Their presentation is going to be, I think, the 27th.
Yeah, because of the.
There's a court conflict with the 20th.
So that's our second meeting in March.
That's the second meeting in February. But it got pushed out because of court.
Anyone else for open forum? All right, so we need a motion to approve the January 3rd meeting minutes.
Second.
Number 16. General, $41,212.13. Water, $7,692.76. Sewer, $3,220. Totally $52,114.40, correction, 89 cents.
Say it again.
2020, yeah.
Fifty-two.
payroll number 17.
Take a motion.
Second.
Transfers?
Yeah, just one thing.
We got transfers. Got a couple. There, we got from the clerk of the court, $5,000 to overtime, part-time for the court clerk because there's no help up there and Susan will work on overtime. And then this was, the next one is I had an issue when I did the budget. I missed this. I put one of the sergeant's salaries into the full-time patrolman. So I just want to move it from full-time patrolman to the supervisor category, $90,900. Then there is from the lieutenant account, $18,000, $15,000 to police overtime, $1,500 to PWI patrol, and that's because I haven't got the money yet from the county or state, wherever the hell it comes from. And then $1,500 for police equipment miscellaneous. We've got some flares and we couldn't return them, so we had to buy them. And then in the contingent account, the general fund, $25,000, $5,000 of it to economic opportunity development. And that was for the cost of the CDVHP bicycles. We got charged $5,000 to have them here.
Is that a forward bill or a pass bill? So is that for next season or for the last season?
That was for the last season. And compensated absence is $6,200. Mike Deambro left, sold some vacation. And in buildings, light, power and gas, $13,800. Price increases, when I did the budget, I kept what we, at the time, had in the budget for this year. And then the tail end of last year, after the budget was approved, the prices went up and they keep going up. So we're a little short on that. So that's the transfers.
Some of.
Out there.
And one other thing. When I did the budget last year, we had three police officers leave between November and March. And when I was doing the budget, I forgot to add two of them in. So the budget is a little short. A couple of the two guys are just hired. So I would like the board to amend the budget. Should be amended by $119,262 because we now have bills. And we need to get the budget up to where it should be so you don't have a big increase next year in the budget for the police. And this is my fault. I lost three guys and I don't know why. I only had one in. I only replaced one of them.
Do we have, are we going to be doing any more hiring fresh here? Or we had full?
We're at level.
Okay.
Well, that's not, this is amateur.
Yeah.
But the school would be going for that, so.
Correct. Okay, so that doesn't, that's.
That doesn't affect.
That's pretty much our book. Okay, all right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
All favor?
All right.
Someone second it? No, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Don't leave, please. I said, don't leave, please.
I didn't plan on.
All right, Nicole, you're up, I think.
So I have to do a resolution to adjust the water and sewer accounts. I had two different addresses that have included usage. It was discovered, we'll talk about 412 Broadway first, and it was discovered that there was an error with the meter reading, which resulted in any care usage. Basically, what happened was this was a newer meter. It was installed in 2013. I had it on the list to get replaced to keep them all in line. But they took it as it was already a newer tile meter, only install the radio. But they took it as it was already a newer style meter, only installed a radio. So I just didn't catch that they didn't install a new meter. So I charged them for the higher usage. It was my mistake. So for do you want me to read the whole thing?
Just the numbers, I guess.
Okay, so for water and sewer account number fifty one dash one six six for four twelve Broadway, water charges were based on incorrect usage. Now therefore, the result is a total of nine hundred seventy one dollars and eighty one cents from water will be adjusted off four twelve Broadway's current bill. And therefore, the result that a total of three hundred eighty eight dollars and seventy two cents from sewer will be adjusted off the four twelve Broadway current bill.
Isn't this the house that burned?
Yeah, so that's that's why I didn't catch it, because I thought that the it had continuous consumption flagging for the water meter. And I got lost in the dates. So we did our readings for this on November first. The fire was November sixth. It was showing continuous consumption, so that's why I thought it was just a higher usage. But it was it was my mistake.
Does that water shut off there now?
Yes.
Inside and on the street.
And then, want to move on this one or do the second one? We'll do them together.
Some of.
All favor.
So then same kind of thing for fourteen Clipper Road. It was also discovered there is an error with the meter reading resulting in incorrect usage. Whereas water and sewer account fifty one dash two four seven dash zero for fourteen Clipper Road, water charges were based on incorrect usage. Now therefore, the result that a total of nine hundred forty four dollars and sixty eight cents from water will be adjusted off fourteen Clipper Road's current bill. And therefore, the result that total of three hundred seventy seven dollars and eighty seven cents from sewer will be adjusted off fourteen Clipper Road's current bill.
These are both high, but so were these unpaid for a period of time?
No, so these, it's the same thing. I thought that a meter was also installed, but only a radio was, and it gave me the same thing with the continuous consumption, which means that there is water flowing through the meter. However, it could be as minimal as an eighth of a cup of water per hour to flag that. So where I just kind of made the assumption that it was linked to the continuous consumption, I didn't look at it further to see that it was only a radio installed on an existing meter. So because it was newly installed around two thousand and eighteen, it just, they didn't install the meter, which again, kind of tricked me up.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I will get this list to Don, but the department is with our most recent purchases of turnout beer, the three that we do every year and the ten additional sets. We're looking to surplus fourteen total jackets, fifteen sets of pants, and eighteen helmets that are all expired and are no longer within the legal to use. If some of that hurt, then. So we can offer them to members. I know some people have actually reached out. They want to use them for cornhole bags. They want to use like the beer after you wash them. It's a thing apparently now. Some people like having helmets up in their man caves or in their race bins or anything like that.
No, you're on once.
I'm not allowed to have those types of things.
That'll be fifty dollars.
Ultimately, they're mostly just thrown out because no one can really use them.
So what are you selling them for? Dollar?
Oh, we don't sell them.
I was joking.
When we do surplus vehicles, we get one.
I mean, if members wanted to take them, they could take them, but otherwise, you can't really sell anything that's out of date according to N F A or OSHA.
Take it out of commission.
Yeah, we're just essentially, Don has it in.
It's in the inventory, so I'm just going to take that stuff out of the inventory.
And then we'll put all the new stuff into the inventory. We just wanted to.
So it officially has to be surplus?
It's surplus, they get rid of it, and then.
Or someone sees a dumpster full of that stuff.
How many?
Fourteen coats, fifteen pants, and eighteen helmets.
They're over ten years old, so.
All the new membership that has come in, plus a little bit of catching up.
All that other stuff is already been purchased.
Yeah, everything's, and it actually all finally just showed up, all the pants and everything. So everybody has all new turnout gear, and they can go back to our regularly scheduled program of purchases. We'll talk about that during the budget.
Historically, we use some of it, like we got a brand new member who didn't have training yet. We would, we could outfit them in old gear, as long as they aren't in a hazardous place, because they're new and they didn't have training. They could go.
I mean, you could use expired gear to climb the ladder and get, you know, I mean, like.
Well, depending on what piece of gear you're speaking of.
Okay.
But we could send them to certainly the DFO, which is the Basic Exterior Firefighting Course, but before they went into the IFO part of it, they would have it normally. That's what we would get them in the cycle of the gear we purchased every year.
So you're holding back any for that purpose?
We do have.
We do have some.
We have some.
In addition to the ones you're surplusing.
Correct.
Okay. How do you prevent them from getting mixed in with the stuff that's?
They're all, they'll have like a label on the inside of the manufacturer.
The easiest way prior to now was all the brown turnout beer was all stuff that was purchased in two thousand seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. So that's all now expired. But now there's inside, it's no different than like a regular tag. It says manufactured on this date. About ten years, unless something crazy happens, then you have to get it inspected.
Does it say ten years on the tag, or does it say expired?
On the tags, but on New York State Ocean.
So it's just something that someone would have to know?
Oh, well, we all tell them. It's state law. It's a state thing.
I moved. Does that take effect immediately?
We're going to give the members a little bit of time.
He just wants it so he can snow blow his driveway.
No, I was going to start.
And then another thing is myself and the D P W foreman have talked, as well as the village as a whole, kind of like sharing resources. We have the squad downstairs that ultimately just, we don't use it. For what it is, it's just not the right type of vehicle. At the time of purchase, it did everything we needed it to do. But we felt that a D P W could actually use it for water breaks and scenarios like that, where there's been times where I brought my chief's car out just to have the extra warning lights, specifically Broadway, Vineyards or Boulevard. People don't care about blinking yellow lights. It can also carry all the water break tools, have it already on it, and we would look to acquire the trailer from them. The safety trailer that's had all the water break equipment, had some old confined space equipment, stuff like that, that we would use in order to put all of our pump out equipment, road closure stuff, because typically, in Manans, we've all been here long enough where if there's a pump out scenario, it's typically all in the same area, because everybody's lost power in that area. For the most part, everyone has some pumps. But we felt that it was a better use for us and for the D P W to exchange those vehicles in order to get the best out of those.
Is the trailer towed?
The trailer would be towed.
By what?
Any of the three cheese vehicles, or Mike and I have kind of agreed that if it was type of event where I could go and get a pickup truck from the D P W, because for the most part, it's only going in the village itself.
They have a lot, the D P W previously has allowed us to use pickup trucks. Certain, well, certain members in the department have been allowed to use a plow truck for like when we're clearing hydrants after a big storm. Mike was kind enough to let certain people take a truck and push some snow out of the way around hydrants, so we could dig them out. It's not anything different than what we've done really before. They're just really swapping who uses it the majority of the time. The biggest problem with that squad is vehicle, it is that diesel engine, it just sits.
Well, and isn't that what usually the fire police use?
Previously, a lot of the fire police have used that. More recently, our most active fire police members, Paul D. Dominicus, Mike McKay, and Luis Clemente, all either respond to the station, to go on the apparatus, or they respond to their own personal vehicles to the scene. Some of them just aren't comfortable driving a type of size vehicle. There is one member in particular that's upset about this. But unfortunately, sometimes you have to ruffle a couple feathers in what most people believe is the best interest of both departments.
Any concerns, Bill, like liability or anything like that that we have to think about?
Well, they're both covered, so they swap them, suppose from one insurance company to the other.
Is there any fit up that's required for either of the two vehicles?
We'll have to exchange the radios, just because we have a newer mobile radio in it. That'll actually go into the new engine when it shows up. I believe they have an older radio in the shop that we'll just put in there. It just has D P W on it. Outside of that, not much. Maybe maybe the light bar on top, just because it does have red in the front. But the majority of the time, it's going to be sitting on the side of the road, and it might only have the rear lights on, so. It might not.
Probably lettering, but.
Maybe lettering on the trailer, but it already says Village of Manans Safety Trailer on it. So if we wanted to maybe put a fire department sticker on it. Outside of that, I don't think there's much updating.
So when you say whoever in the department is using the D P W pickup truck, is everybody covered to drive that?
Yes.
And then we're doing the, trying to update the G I S thing, so you guys will have to just, this gets approved, make sure that gets updated.
It's what's up. Yeah.
Does this need board approval, or is it is it just an internal? So moved.
And it will fit in the station, so I wanted to say outside or anything like that. Let's get a little bit of rearranging once the new engine comes, but for the majority of times, pump outs aren't like, when you're responding to like, they are actual emergencies, but there's typically a little bit more of time you can take to prepare all the equipment to go. It's not say what happens.
You're going to store the equipment in there, right?
Yeah.
So rather than if you go down the hallway, it's all down the hallway and all.
Kind of frees up the side to where we can potentially put some lockers there or.
Just.
It's the life I live.
All right, so I don't know if you heard this, you guys were talking before, Jessica.
They still kind of sell it.
I'm just looking forward to surplus equipment. Let me know when, that's all downstairs, right?
It's all downstairs.
But then you said you have to, you wanted some time.
Yeah, we'll we'll offer it to the members. I'll I'll send out an email by Friday to over the weekend, if you want some.
Yeah, 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 I don't want to take it.
You can go out there shoveling your driveway and your fire helmet and.
I'm making, I'm making cornhole bags this weekend with my sewing machines that I got from school when they surplus those.
You all right, Brian?
Five dollars for a really nice sewing machine. All right, so we received a thank you note from the Yearbook Club. Thank you for advertising in the Manans School Yearbook. Your support helps make the yearbook affordable for all students and is greatly appreciated. I don't know if I can.
We did receive the community block grant application and stuff, so I'll put that in the next activity, so I'll, I have the application in the office.
Oh, speaking of that, do we have any thoughts on what, you know, if we, if there's anything we could apply towards? I mean, I know, and I was, Brian mentioned we got a grant for the rehab of the bathrooms at the park. It's like, do I get to cover the entire cost? Is it something that could supplement it? Because I think that might be eligible for.
I think it is enough.
Can we, can we use it to do the renovation or your work? I mean, I don't know.
It's worth a try. I mean, it's probably generally maybe four or five thousand dollars. Because they. Every little bit, every little bit helps, but it's just a thought.
Yep. So if you're on that one August, Brianna stepped down as the youth director. We've been advertising for the position ever since. One person Brianna and I talked to back in, I don't know, maybe October, he decided he wanted his summers off, so he changed his mind, but we did just interview another person, Samantha Hall. She is a second grade, I think it's second grade teacher at Manans School. She also has worked the last five or so years at Saint.
Honest Gregory.
Gregory, at Saint Gregory. And she's interested in the job. She's excited about it. Brianna and I both think she'd be a good fit. I would like to move for the board to approve the appointment of Samantha Hall as our new youth director, and she would be at the same rate of pay that Brianna was. All favor.
She starts when?
Yeah, yeah. The next thing would be Easter, I guess, would be the next thing if they do that. Yeah, oh yeah, she'll come in at the next meeting tomorrow, I just. And also, as far as Z B A, Kevin Miller has stepped down, so I would like to move for the board to, what do you call you guys, active members? There's an alternate, one of the other ones.
Board members.
Move Danielle, who's been our alternate for several years, to up to the board, and then Charles Arzneff, who is here, to make him the alternate for the Z B A.
I'll make a motion to select Danielle Freeman to the zone board. And Charles, I'm sorry, Charles, I didn't hear your last name.
It's pronounced similar to the word insert, but with an A, Charles answered.
Answered, as the, as the. And I'd also like to thank Kevin for his service.
Charles, thank you very much for grateful that you're interested in the position, that you can highly recommend it. And I don't know, you got a whole book here. You got to start reading. They keep up with, it doesn't go for us. It goes to Cheryl at the girl's office, and she keeps us dead. You got to do something with Don.
I'll get you.
I sent you an email. I copied Charles on it while I was sitting here.
Okay.
You had, you had his card in your hand, then you took it away. Yeah. Put a card in your pocket, you lose it.
Thank you. John, did you have anything else?
Nope, that was it.
Anybody else? Any updates on High Service Reservoir, just what I said before, like last time when we met with Doug and Phil, Tim, and all what's going on?
Also, any, I see, I'll take this off so you can hear it. Jen, I see you're on the call. Is that Jen? Okay, good. I'm at a weird angle here. I apologize. Any, are there any updates on playgrounds? I got a follow-up email about the request for a playground in the South End. Any thoughts as to, as to space?
Who was it that was hearing?
I did get a note about that after I wasn't at the meeting where that was discussed, but I did get a note afterwards. And we'll need to review that with our landscape architect team. I think this slipped off the radar during the holidays, so I'll revitalize that conversation.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. Let me know when I'll get back to the resident on that. You want to, you want to see the space or go over there, let me know. I'd be happy to meet you over there.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, Jen, did you have anything for us? Are you good? I forgot, actually, you were there. Are you good?
Just just here for whatever you need me for. I'm good.
All right, thank you. All right, well, I do have a personnel matter for executive session.
Oh, I should, sorry, just one more, one more thing, real quick. Any updates on the stop signs from, I've got any of the inventory numbers?
I gave it to Mike. I'll check them out.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, you can stick around, and then, not you, Bill.
I've got one question, Meg, before we, before we move on in board. Was the this seeker activity for thirty seven Simmons on the agenda tonight?
What did, what do we need to do? Did we get that resolution?
I thought, I thought it was, I know we had to put it on here for tonight.
We're supposed to declare lead agency, right?
Yes.
And then, did you send over a resolution? We can do that right now.
Yep, I sent over a resolution this afternoon, so hopefully.
Yep, I sent over a resolution this afternoon, so hopefully Don has that.
Well, that's why I sent it on the agenda.
You want to forward it to me, Jen, I can pull it up.
Okay, let me find it.
Here it is. All right, I got it, Jen. Whereas the applicant, two guys and a girl, or no, two girls and a guy, is requesting site plan approval from the village board of Manans to construct two new warehouses. On a twenty-four point one acre parcel at thirty-seven Simmons Lanes in the village of Manans, whereas the project includes building one to be occupied by a single building, am I reading the right thing?
Yes.
Okay. Building construction services user and a building two to be occupied by several warehousing who are expected to warehouse materials for the light industrial use like manufacturing, assembly use, construction materials. And distribution of parts and finished products, whereas the building will be one-story, steel frame metal buildings that are approximately twenty-eight feet high. And will also include truck docks and acrid overhead doors on the south side of the building with a total of ninety-nine surface parking spaces. Whereas hours of operation, including loading dock operations are expected to be seven A M to seven P M, seven days a week, whereas. The project site is located within the industrial zoning district and entails filling in the flood plain and a hundred-foot regulated adjacent area and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation regulated flatland. Whereas the total acreage to be physically disturbed is seven point nine acres. Whereas the proposed action has been determined to be an unlisted action pursuant to New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. Now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to the applicable standards of seeker, part six one seven point six, the Village of Manans Village Board concludes that it is the appropriate agency to serve as lead agency. For the environmental review of the proposed unlisted act. It further resolved that the Village of Manans Village Board hereby declared its intent to be lead agency for the coordinated seeker evaluation circulated. The site plan application and associated materials to the other involved and interested agencies, including the village board's intention to serve as lead agency. Therefore be it resolved that the Village of Manans Village Board hereby establishes themselves as lead agency for review of the proposed action pursuant to the requirements of state environmental. Quality Review Act. Thanks, Jen.
Amen.
Don, do you need that or you?
I haven't, I just, I thought, because when I was talking to Lyle, he said you were gonna, I wouldn't sure if it was for tonight or not, and I apologize.
All right, so we're good with everybody, Jen, you can, and Billy, you can sign off, and then we have another executive session, if anybody made a motion.
Thanks very much.
Soonie Oldman would like me to take an intern for the police department, criminal justice. So I don't, and they can be used for a bunch of different things, so could even be used to help the court out. Yeah, so I have one application, but they also are criminal justice, they want to know, you know, about the police department and go in the car and do all that stuff, which we can do. But it's like fifteen, I think fifteen hours a week.
Fifteen hours a week?
Yeah, something like that, so I wanted to talk to you about it before I committed to it.
Are you okay with it, you want to?
I'm okay with it, we had the young kids from the place in Troy, but they were all high school kids, these are actual, this, this kid's graduating in May, so. They're on a pursuit of career in law enforcement and.
Is the pay didn't change?
No.
So when we come out of executive, we should approve?
To authorize an intern for the police department.
We're still recording, do you want? Do you want to?
Okay, here we have an actually going to executive session, okay.
I will make a motion to authorize the chief to take on an intern up to, for the semester up and through May. Fifteen hours a week, unpaid.
Unpaid.
Turn to a meeting to enjoy.